Let's call a meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. It is January 5th, 2021. Happy New Year to everyone. It is the City of West Liberty's regular city council meeting. All councilors are present except for Robbie Rock. Councilor Rock is not present with us today. On Zoom is Councilor Smith, and the rest of the councilors are here at the public library. We have with us a small agenda tonight. The first item is the roll call. And second item is the approval of the agenda. Before we go on with that, though, I just want to make sure with the roll call also, we have Lee Gertz, the City Treasurer Clerk, and interim City Manager Elizabeth Hansen also in attendance at the library with us. Do we have a motion for the approval of the agenda tonight?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in three seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? So passes four zero. We have four items tonight, the approval of consent agenda. It is the council minutes of the December 15th, 2020 meeting, the City Clerk Treasures Report for October 2020. Also, two renewals. The first renewal for a Class C beer permit and Sunday sales for El Sharpe Mexican Restaurant. And the second is the El Patio Restaurant, and that is also a Class C and Sunday sales. There's motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Chief, is there any issues with the beer permits?
No, there is not.
Thank you.
Is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Passes four zero. We are on to the vendor vouchers claims list, and we have one claims list in front of us tonight for the amount of $349,757.36. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Passes four zero. We are on to public comment and correspondence. There is no one at the public library. Is there anyone from the public on Zoom that would wish to address the council? Okay, I'm not hearing anything. Let's start with you, Lee. Lee, do you have anything for public comments from the community?
I just had received some correspondence from resident Lisa Browning. She is a landlord here in West Liberty, and she had inquired on some processes for utility notification. And I mean, I reviewed what her request was, and then she had asked to reach out to the council, and I provided for the utility committee's emails to start with, and she could reach out to the mayor of the utility with what her inquiry was about. If she wanted to have the proceedable look at her issue.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
City Manager Hansen?
I don't know, thanks, ma'am.
Okay. Well, let's start with council members. Let's go. Councilmember Smith, do you have any public correspondence?
I got one. I had somebody come to me and say how they thought that the city streets were cleaned really well after the storm. They thought it went real well. So, nice going out to the city for cleaning the streets. It looked very nice.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. And I do, they did a good job, and I know that most of our street crew had worked very long hours through the night and into the next day, helping clear the streets. So, I appreciate that, and I know that the council appreciates the hard work and the very long hours that Adam and his crew put in. So, thank you, and can you let everybody know that, Adam? Oh. Well, let's go ahead and council member. Is he still trying to unmute it? Okay, I thought he was trying to touch the screen.
Yeah, keep moving along.
Councilmember McCarron, do you have any public comments?
I got two public comments. One was what Clerk Gertz had mentioned about, from Lisa Browning. And then one was from Stephen Shield in regards to the favor of the UTVs in town. And then the one about the policy that Lisa Browning was talking about, would it be possible if she just notified the city and requested that she be on the notification according to our policy in notices to landlords or administrative policy? I mean, is that possible? Because it's kind of written that way.
That wasn't in line with what we had discussed, so I guess I would just like the opportunity to follow up with you.
Yeah, that would be fine.
And then we can go through what her communication was with you to make sure that we're on the same page, and then we'll then review that back to the policy.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Anything else, Kira? Councilmember Zacharys?
Yes, good comments about the workers of the city cleaning the streets.
That's it? Okay. Councilor Rock?
I got the same ATB comment that Kira got, and also a lot of good comments about the streets. Good job.
I did correspond with Mr. Shield, and he did indicate he had sent it to all the councilors. So, we'll see where that research and discussion on the Roth Cart APVs takes us. Okay, looks like we are done with public comments. We have two items of business tonight for new business. And the first one is the discussion and appropriate follow-up on the Economic Development Program application. And this is for Ethan Anderson for 111 West Third Street. And in our packet was the application, photos, his quotes, and different information regarding that project. Council, I know that staff did recommend that we do approve the application.
I'm getting a motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no discussion, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Passes four zero. And I think that part of that rehab for him also is one of the things that we have, you know, the fact, you know, to the businesses and how they look in the alleys and that. So, it looks like at least his business will be able to get a little bit of renovation on that. So, that's a good deal. And the second order of business for new business is our mission and value statement. In our packet, we do have a few pages reference that. And I will go ahead and let City Councilor, no, City Manager Hansen, explain that, and we can discuss as a council where we want to go with our mission and statements.
Okay, so if you recall, on November 23rd, council met, and we did some organizational effectiveness training. One of the items that came from that evening was to look at coordinating a mission statement and some value statements. So, I had promised to provide you the documentation, and in the packet is an action form that just really discusses what the purpose of a mission statement and the questions to ask yourselves on what values that you want to basically relay to the community and to the organization, what your expectations are, and how you want the city employees to behave in accordance to those values and that mission. It's important also to have a mission statement that provides the direction when you're doing your goal setting and any vision work that you're doing with components of planning, then that should be consistent with your mission statement as well. So, again, the packet provides you with kind of a worksheet to put down some of your thoughts. And then I provided nine different options of different mission statements that were provided from different cities to kind of throw out some ideas. It's kind of a lot there to think about. And then also the same for 19 different values statements that cities have used as well. So, it's really for you to work through. And again, maybe it's homework and not maybe something you want to discuss tonight, but it's on the agenda for you to consider.
Could we, as a council, I mean, it is two weeks until our next meeting kind of for homework to put down some of, you know, there's a checklist and then look through some of the other statements, values and mission statements from other cities, and kind of give the next meeting all bring in and have available for City Manager Hansen to kind of go through and sort through those. And then with everybody's input, then that'll give us a good starting point, and then we can kind of evolve that. How long do you think that would take? Once we would get kind of the core, everybody's core value statements and checklist?
If you provided those on the Wednesday before the next council meeting, then we can put all these options together on another sheet, and then you could then maybe vote or consider those instead of all these letters in front of you.
Okay.
Maybe January 13th.
January 13th?
Yep.
Lee, could you follow up and send out an email to all of us, reminding them just an email, and then maybe we can all reply? Or, you know, if you want to do it in paper and bring it to City Hall or send it to Lee, that's fine. Or if you want to do it electronically, that's fine, too.
I'll make sure I include the interim City Manager Hansen provided you tonight, and I'll make sure I provide that in a reminder just so you have it again in front of you.
Wonderful. Okay, is there any other discussion that's needed for this topic? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to reports. Tonight, we'll start out with the City Engineer Leo.
Yes, sir. We've been working, VNK has been working on the stormwater utility and the new water and sewer rates. I think at the next council meeting, I'd like to have maybe 10 minutes to give you guys an update on where we're at, kind of a status on those rates. We won't have everything complete, but we'll have things ready to get some input. I know Lee and I are meeting tomorrow to go over more or less some nitty-gritty details I need help with on some of the city information we've got. That's ongoing. Well, number two, we're still waiting on the one radium sample. It took quite a while for them to get the testing complete, and it's supposed to be done this week. I have not seen it yet. Once we have that, then we can...
Leo, your volume checked out. It shows that you're active, but I don't see any, we're not hearing you.
How about now? Can you hear me any better now?
Is it us or is it you?
Hearing fine.
Dave, can you hear him?
Yes, I can hear him fine.
How about now? Anybody can, can you hear me now or not? Sounds like everybody except maybe the people that need to hear me at City Hall, I mean, at the library can hear.
It is, yep.
Okay, Leo?
Okay.
We can hear you now, it's not with the speakers, but we can still hear you. The last report was well number two, still waiting for the testing, and then everything went mute.
Okay, still waiting on the radium testing. All the other testing came through pretty well. We're still waiting on the radium. Once we get radium, we'll go back to the DNR and ask them about the next steps as far as making that into a production well. Last thing, I did talk with Brad Akers today. He is moving forward with the subdivision that he was starting on. He is going to get a hold of the building inspector, and then his next steps, according to City Manager Hansen's thing, is to look into rezoning. So, I kind of told him what I thought he needed, but I think City Manager Hansen, he'll be probably talking to you also about the rezoning and what he needs to kind of get that ball rolling. It sounds like that he's still pretty excited about it. As always, there's always concerns about lot prices and whether he can make it work, but it sounds like things are moving in the right direction. And that's all I had, unless people have questions.
Council, any questions for Leo? Okay, thank you, Leo.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, if you guys are talking, we can't hear you. We're hearing a lot of buzzing noise.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I was just giving an update about our Building and Grounds Committee meeting yesterday. Kira, from VNK met with us. And hopefully, the next meeting will be consenting plans previewed and more information.
Little bit to that, there are going to be also, what you'll be doing at the next meeting is setting the public hearing for February 18th, but you'll at least get to see the concept and maybe some like a timeline. And then we also reviewed a lease agreement for group remodel project, and where administration will be displaced starting March 1st. So, we have, we'll explain that in the next meeting. And then besides that, today spent a great deal of time with Lee on the budget, and then tomorrow we'll be meeting the four of the property directors on the budget line item detail. And then the Enterprise Department Director, which are utilities and road use, will be meeting next Friday. So, we're moving forward on the budget. Other than that, Leo talked about acres, and you probably saw in that last meeting packet a laundry list of multiple actions that property will be taking. So, that's exciting to hear that he's moving forward. On the debt proposal, the proposed developers are still contemplating. I thought they gave up on the project, but they're still going to need again, and hopefully, we'll see some kind of on that. So, skateboarding on those things. There's going to be a lot of meetings coming up for the policy committee. We have a lot of ordinances that we review, a lot of. On my report, we talked about salary matrix, pay-per-performance matrix evaluation. The niche plates regulations and fees. Another thing that came up during the ordinance of that training.
Mayor, I think you just cut out again.
Policy on who to handle and how to handle social media. How about now, Dave?
Start again?
Yeah?
Yeah, okay, you sound good now.
Okay.
Thank you.
This month, you assigned meet, you, you, that committee. So, that may change.
There's a change around again with Sherry, how are you?
Well, I was thinking that, and because we don't get to meet in person usually anymore, that usually that's kind of a discussion that's the last meeting. So, I would suggest any councilors that want to change or not be on a certain committee, to let me know, and we will look at student and others. My hesitation to change committees, at least this year, is because we have so much going on with interim City Manager Hansen and are kind of in the middle of so many different committees, different projects, that I'm afraid that we would have to have a council member get all brought up to what's going on in certain committee meetings. So, but for some reason, if you're just terribly can't stand the committee you're on, please let me know, and I'll try to make some adjustments. So, we'll kind of try to keep them the same meeting or the same committees unless there's something that somebody has to get off because of Dave's times and whatever, just not work. Yeah, could you? Can you still hear me, Dave?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, anything, I think you wrapped up. Okay. Lee, any highlights from your report to the council?
I know, you know, just looking at this, I provided additional letter today from Bowman and Miller Taylor, who is the lead audit for that, which is in with regards to our current situation. So, we need to be safe to reduce our financial statement. And yes, today I received some more clean house discussing more information. So, we'll continue that. You know, hopefully, we can get it wrapped up by the end of the week. That's my goal. Continuing to try to be positive and keep getting the information from them. Just a real brief thing about, you know, our group survey, our health insurance coverage looks really good again this year. Those good lab, you know, staff and staying healthy and that piece of it. And I think the other pieces that I just kind of wanted to provide you was we got a brief update tonight with regards to a nuisance case. And I'm probably, well, I will follow up with Sherry tomorrow, and we'll get an update on all the working nuisances we'll report, and we'll provide that to the council as an additional report from the next council meeting. What we've heard and what continues to go, and where we're at.
Okay. And what's your superintendent, Ed Travers? Anything to highlight on your super-long report?
Not a thing. That's it is what it is. You got anything for me?
I do not. Is there any safety or anything you want to relate to the public reference electric and ice or snow or anything like that?
No, not really. I don't have anything for that.
Okay, thank you. Fire Chief Kurt Sickles, is he on? I did not see him.
He's on, yeah, he's on there.
Oh, I just see his, oh, it's just his name.
Yep.
Kurt, do you have anything to highlight from your report?
Let's see.
He's using the chat.
Yep. We just, so Chief Sickles, 15 members have taken the first round of COVID shots.
Okay.
So, that's his update from his report.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Kurt. Is there any questions from the council prepared to? Good, thank you.
I had some, what are we looking like for? Do we know anything about what the COVID is like for in town? I mean, has it gotten worse, any better?
I thought 9% was last, I heard, but did that go up again?
12%.
12%, so we own a 3% last, I heard last week.
For the county, not for the city. The county reported 12%.
Did you hear that, Dave? 12% for the county?
Okay, thank you.
Did you hear on Police Chief Lira? Anything you want to highlight, reference your report that you submitted?
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, my December report, Officer Sartori submitted his resignation on the 22nd. Officer Sartori accepted an opportunity to take a position in Dyersville Police Department. His last day will be the 15th of January. I'm sure the Western Police Department and city staff support his opportunity, but we are set to see him go. Interim Sergeant Hauser and myself are updating the job posting. We have the posting reviewed by interim City Manager Hansen, and with approval, we'll post a position for city policy to hire Sartori's replacement. Also, this month, we had shop with cop, the annual shop with the cop. We had to do a little different due to COVID. The Western Police Department had to make changes. Students created a wish list. Us officers with the assistance of Faith Lane from the City shopped at Walmart with these lists. This year, 20 students with the list were able to have their gifts and donations made. With the help of Santa Claus, we went to every house that night and delivered the gifts to the children and their families. Even though there was changes to the way we did it, it was actually a very good success, very great success. Operations on the police department this week, the Dodge Ram was out of commission due to significant engine repairs with the amount of $5,000. I did review with JR's if there was a recall with the repair. Unfortunately, currently, there are no recalls on the engine issues. Have reached out to City Clerk Gertz to review if there were any active warranty, an active warranty on it. And there's not. Sergeant Hauser and I had a meeting with City Clerk Gertz to review the option to remove the Caprice from the WL, from the West Liberty Police Department fleet and pursue a grant opportunities for replacement. We are considering use with Laura Miles' vehicle. We will meet with interim City Manager and City Clerk Gertz to present some options to have the WLPD operational fleet and WLPD vehicle fleet expenditures impact, how it will impact our expenditures on the budget warranty. This month, I'll have a meeting with the Governor Traffic Safety Bureau on the phone. I thought the meeting was today, but I called her and Sherry Cone, and she did not return my call. I'll make another attempt to call her tomorrow. I believe she was supposed to give me a call today, but for some reason, it didn't happen. I don't think the office was open for some reason. Sergeant Hauser and I are currently reviewing grant opportunities for equipment and programming. Dropbox for assistance to safely discard prescription drugs with CVS pharmacist. We have that. I'm not sure if we received the letter from you, Mr. Mayor, for that. We have that, I'm not sure if we received the letter from you, Mr. Mayor, for that, we're going to need your assistance with that. And we're pursuing a Ryan Memorial Trust grant for vehicle matching funds. This month, we served warrants on subjects for reckless, for reckless use of a firearm. We seized a firearm and put into evidence. We had twenty-three four calls for service, four arrests, one aggravated misdemeanor, one serious misdemeanor and two felony arrests. We had twenty-nine vehicle inspections, approximate revenue of one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. We have two open cases at this point, one for check fraud, one for sexual abuse. Do you have any further questions on, on this report, feel free to contact me at the police department. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Chief, Claire, I just wanted to share with the council, if you chair why Officer Sartori is resigning and leaving, his family is moving from the area?
Yeah, Officer Sartori's out, is originally from Wisconsin and his wife is originally from Dubuque. And his wife, I believe, is not too happy for a job in the area and she wants to be closer to her family, which is up where Dyersville is, up in Dubuque. And she, she pretty much told him that he had to go with her.
Okay, thank you, Dave, I just wanted to counsel the law that he wasn't unhappy, it was.
He's actually very, he has mixed feelings because I think he really enjoyed working with us and the group of people that we work with, we all get to work together very well, so.
Thank you. Okay, looks like we are to the adjournment portion of our meeting. Very second? Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Anybody oppose? You're so adjourned.